All right, good evening. As you can tell, we have one very excited constituent with us tonight. You know, this is such a wonderful evening, I want to welcome everybody, including our young friend. I want to welcome everybody to the Orange County School Board. This is our organizational meeting. It's a meeting where we swear in our new members, and as such, I just want to share on behalf of the entire board how excited we are all to be here tonight. Tonight is all about four people. It's all about Pam Gould, Kat Gordon, Nancy Robinson, and Christine Moore. So let me just begin by giving them a great round of applause for winning election and reelection. I am going to begin by asking the Reverend Andrew Miller of St. Luke's United Methodist Church if he would please join us at the lectern and lead us in our moment of prayer. Reverend Miller, welcome.
If you would all join me in prayer. God, we are here tonight to ask your blessing on the new members and returning members to this board. Lord, we ask that you give this board guidance, to give our children dreams, to give our children inspiration, and to give our children the gift of education. Lord, we ask that you let Orange County be an example for all other counties in America, to make our education great, so that our kids and our county can also be great. In your name, amen.
(Inaudible)
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 You know, I'm laughing because no matter how many times you go over your script and make sure that you're familiar with it, you're always thrown by something, and I was sort of sitting up here panicking for a minute going, "Oh, who's doing the Pledge of Allegiance?" Then I realized, "Oh, it's me." So, thank you all. Before we call up the Honorable Judge Bellman Perry to administer the Oath of Office of our newly-elected and returning board members, I did want to recognize a very, very special person, someone who has served with incredible passion, dedication, and energy to the children and the citizens of Orange County. And before we walked into this meeting tonight, somebody out in the foyer said something that I think rings so very, very true with me, and I think every member of this board would agree with, and every member of this administration would agree with, which is one thing that you can never say about Vicki Bell, is that she wasn't in it for the right reasons, that she was in it because her heart was for children, her heart was for education, and it came through in my two years on this board with her, and the other members' four years on this board with her, her deep-abiding passion and respect for the public education system in this country. So Vicki, I'd like to recognize you for some of your acts, and to thank you for your service to the people of Orange County. Mr. Roach, did you want to make some comments before Ms. Bell did?
Whatever's appropriate.
Okay.
I didn't know we were coming right out with that, but I'd like to say something.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? I'd like to recognize, let's go Mrs. Gordon first, she had punched her bun, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Roach, and then any other board members who would like to make any comments, and then I'm going to close with Ms. Bell. Ms. Gordon.
Well, I think it's an honor to be able to make just wonderful comments about my friend, and I'm talking about my friend Vicki Bell. This is not just a board friendship, this is a friendship that has grown over the years. We've worked each other's campaign for many, many years. We started out on the school board together, but we don't always agree, but I love it that we are friends, and we never did allow our friendship to tear us apart because of how she voted and how I voted. I've always admired Vicki and her children and her family. She helped me and supported me. I will always back Vicki. One thing that I love about Vicki, Vicki did not mind going into somebody else's district and helping children. She knew that my children at Evans, and that my children at Jones, and that my children at Oak Ridge, and Memorial, and Orange Center, she knew that they needed glasses. We as a board did not have the resource to do what she did, and she brought those children before the school board with eyeglasses, and the grades improved. That is out of sight. So she will always be my friend. She will always, we never did a competent thing, but she will always be my friend. We couldn't talk because of the sunshine law, but we always... (Laughter) See, y'all thought I was going to mess up on that, but I did. I would say, "Vicki, I'm your mentor. We cannot violate the sunshine law." And I think everybody on this board knows me for that, that I will run away from every one of you and keep it straight, but I love you with all my heart, and I will always be your friend. You're a great board member.
You know, Mrs. Gordon, one day when I leave this board, I want you to go last after I... (Laughter) Because I can't imagine going out on a higher note than after one of your speeches. Mr. Roach.
Yeah, I want to thank Vicki Bell for her service, and as a fellow educator, a comrade in the education world, I will surely miss that, but I think what speaks volumes about Vicki Bell is that a lot of people run for school board. Lots of people in town have run for school board, but not many run, lose, run, lose, and run again. And I think when you do that, I think you really, really want to be on the board. A lot of people always say, "Why don't you run again? You were a good candidate." Vicki did that. She was determined to be here, and I think that carries over with some of her role. She's a very persistent woman, very persistent. And I think another thing to Vicki's credit is, Vicki, if you think back to the project she embraced, she took the tough jobs. She really did. She took the jobs that kept her here late at night with the Transportation Committee when she first got on the board, probably regretted it, but she put in lots of hours trying to show the district how money savings was there. She came in on the flip, helped to turn the flip, very controversial kind of vote, but I think in all the memories I have on the school board over the last decade and a half, probably in the top five would be the day that we went to Evans High School and saw all those kids at once put their glasses on for the first time. I don't think I'll ever forget that, and I think I probably had tears in my eyes, but it was so great, I was so grateful. And Kat's right, she took on that project, and I really hope that, I think that is your legacy vision, Vicki, and I hope that this board will make sure that that doesn't die, because it doesn't matter what a kid knows, if they can't see, they're not going to achieve, and we need to be in there to help them. So I wish you my very best, my friend, and please don't be a stranger. Thanks.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bell, I want to, you know, wish you all the best in your future. You definitely will be known for vision with that legacy. I think you all taught us a lot about that whole effort with children, and you did serve. It's not easy, as Mr. Roach was saying, it's not easy, you have to be brave. You took a lot of stands that a lot of us sometimes didn't agree with, but you did it, and I respect that, and I just wish you all the best.
Ms. Caddell.
Vicki will always admire your tenacity, and you know, like Mrs. Gordon said, we didn't always agree, but nobody knows how hard this job is until you walk in those shoes, and a lot of times it's easy to give in to political pressure because you think it's the easy thing to do, and it'll keep people happy, but you always stay true to your heart, you always stay true to your beliefs, and that's one of the things you'll be leaving the board remembered as, and I wish you all the best in the future.
I certainly don't want to prolong the time. I've spoken to Ms. Bell privately, and we've shared our thoughts. I want to publicly thank you for your service to the children of Orange County Public Schools for your tireless effort, and certainly wish you well as you leave this place. We jokingly admit, when people leave, the next time we see them, we have to tell them, "You look so good, you look so young, you look so wonderful," and so we look forward to seeing you again in the future, Ms. Bell. Thank you.
Ms. Bell, we'd love to hear from you as well.
I think this will be easier. Okay, I do want to make a couple comments and give a few thank yous. This is my last meeting at OCPS, and I definitely want to thank the board members who spoke. It was very touching. I wasn't going to get up here touched, but you know, it was touching. This is the end of my service here on the board, and I do look at this as a public service, that I had the opportunity to perform. Everyone should have this opportunity. I'm just kidding. It is more difficult, like Mrs. Caddell said, than people realize. It's not easy. And it is part of the, but it is part of our democratic representative government, and I think that's a message that I'd like to get out there a little bit more. This is a representative, we're voted representatives to represent our constituency in a government organization, and sometimes I think that gets fuzzy. Maybe I'll write a book on that. I ran for this office because I wanted to do something on a large scale for the students of Orange County. I am pleased to have done just that, and to have accomplished the reverse of the flip, and with the Transportation Task Force work, we saved $40 million in transportation. $30 million was saved by us not buying buses for three years. We found out we had 400 more buses than we needed. And another $9 million was saved per year, a lot due to our transportation, our new transportation head, Mr. Beekman, who actually started using our routing software, which we'd been paying 21 years for. I'm also pleased that through my efforts and help from others, thousands of children in Orange County were able to get accurate screening with high-tech devices, and thousands got glasses for the first time, and were able to improve their work, their school grades, and self-esteem. I'm also pleased to have helped many families and children who needed extra attention and help in the district, and I did do that. I enjoyed working one-on-one with a lot of individuals. I feel pleased with that, with what I was able to accomplish, and I wish the best to the board after I leave. I am not sad about leaving, and I am looking forward to new pursuits and experiences in the future. I will miss people that I befriended here and that I worked with, but I'm ready to go on and do something new. So maybe I will write some books. I mentioned to Dr. Jenkins, "We need a good grammar book." Okay, I want to thank all of the people I've been able to work with while being here, and all the help they've given me. I also want to thank all of my supporters here and throughout the county and District 1, and I want to mention some. Two of my daughters, Debbie Bell and Amber Bell. My would-be son-in-law, Keith Swakowski. I'd like to thank the CTA, Diana Moore specifically, and Luli, and whoever else on the CTA that's here, Joanne Friedland, Leona Rockman, she was, did so much for me. June Cole of the Oxford-Moore Settlement, and Ricardo Cumberback. Can you hold up your hands over there? They're of the Oxford-Moore Rural Settlement, Ricardo's the president of that. Ken Dwyer, I don't know if he made it here, Teresa Malley, Ray Riley, and all the others that helped out, you know, with my campaign, and those that helped me with my projects while I was here on the board. I want to thank all of you. Now I also want to congratulate our new district representative, Pam Gould, and wish her the best in the next four years, and I wish her success in helping District 1's schools as well as all the county schools. I wish her luck in helping families and children who will need her help throughout District 1. I hope that in the next four years, she will feel pleased with what she has been able to accomplish, as I have, and thanks to all of you.
Well said, Ms. Bell, and thank you again for your service. All right, I do want to recognize we have some elected officials with us here tonight, the one who I'm very, very thrilled and happy to see return as our supervisor of elections, Mr. Bill Cows. And also, I don't see Commissioner Brummer out there, but I'm here, there you are, Fred, Commissioner Fred Brummer, welcome. Thank you, Fred, for being here. And Vice Mayor of Eatonville, Eddie Cole, is here. Where's Eddie at? Eddie, are you still here?
Yeah.
Okay, have I missed any other elected officials? If I do, I apologize. All right, tonight we have, we're next going to go into the Oath of Office, and we're going to begin with Pam Gould, and lead us in our Oath of Office tonight. We are joined by someone, and I've known him for a long time, so I say this tongue-in-cheek, but someone who has now become a national celebrity, Judge Bellman Perry. And Judge Perry will appreciate this, he may be a national celebrity, but to those of us at Orange County Public Schools, he's still Principal Maxwell's brother, so... (Laughter) So Judge Perry, if you would administer the Oath of Office to Pam. Pam, Ms. Gould, if you would step forward with your husband and family, please, and your family Bible. And I'll turn it over to the able hands of the judge.
Okay, would you raise your right hand and put your F-hand on the Bible and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear... I do solemnly swear... ...that I will protect and defend... I will protect and defend... ...the Constitution and government of the United States... The Constitution and government of the United States... And the State of Florida... And the State of Florida... That I am duly qualified... That I am duly qualified... ...to hold office under the Constitution of the State... That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the State... And perform the duties... And perform the duties... ...of member... Of member... ...of the school board of Orange County, Florida... Of the school board of Orange County, Florida... So help me God... So help me God... Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Pam, you don't get off that easy. Now you have to come sit with us. Welcome. All right, we are now going to swear in Mrs. Kat Gordon. Kat.
I'm going to ask at this time, this is my wonderful pastor, the Reverend Doctor. I'm claiming it. I'm claiming it. He's out there running back and forth, working on it. Terrence Gray, and I'm going to ask, you can clap for him, that's my pastor, he has to put up with me. And I'm just going to take this privilege, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you said "family." I want you to see my family. It has grown. My children will come forward, my grandchildren, all five and a half. My daughter-in-law, my sons and daughter, the one and a half, the five and a half, you can see in the brown dress, that's Stacy. See, you didn't think I had a family, but I do. And then I have cousins and uncles and aunts out there, I have my brothers and sisters that have worked with me since 1967. Will you all come forward? Come on. They have been my family. Betty and Tom and Gail and Reginald. Father Pinda has really taken care of me since 1967. Kitty and her husband, Betty Chandler and I, all of my neighbors on 936 St. George Street. They know if they don't put a sign in the yard. And then my sorority sisters that have taken me in, the Alpha Kappa Alpha and Gamma Phi Delta Sorority Incorporated. That's right, of Alpha Phi Alpha. And then my educators that work with me in the school system, please come forward. Johnny and Pinky, the Sanders, please come forward. Ranita, that we taught, Ranita Mother, who fed me for over 40-something years here. Mrs. Sanders. Bill, you might be teaching at Oak Ridge now, baby, but you come on down, because Don Frederick was the one who gave you to me, and we raised you, with Stacy and Aunt David, my Rock Lake community, and all of my community, Mavis. This has been my community. JoJo, where's Mavis? I have my personal photographer. I want you to see who's behind Kat Gordon. Now, I also want you to know that the sheriff of Orange County, Florida, is behind Kat Gordon, and Val Demings, soon to be whatever, is behind Kat Gordon. I want you to know that the school board sends me to work with Cliff Thomas, but my pastor has also put me on the trustee board, and Cliff Thomas is the treasurer. So the community action board, where I work with the Honorable Teresa Jacobs. So Cliff is Cliff out there. Come on. Ralph Armstead is a part of the school board, but he's my church brother. Henry, my church brother, Veronica Mother, my neighbor. Come on. I want you all to know that I get around. My Sanford, AKA Sisters, they're already up there from Sanford, Florida. See, I work in Sanford too, baby, and Osceola County. Okay, I want to thank you, and I want you to know that Judge Bellman Perry, I live in his neighborhood also. Thank you. Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? Which one, the wrong hand? And repeat after me. I better put it up. I do solemnly swear... I do solemnly swear... ...that I will protect and defend... That I will protect and defend... ...the Constitution and government of the United States... The Constitution and government of the United States of America... And the State of Florida... And the State of Florida... And that I am duly qualified... And that I am duly qualified... ...to hold office under the Constitution of the State... Say it again, Judge. To hold office... To hold office... Under the Constitution of the State... Under the Constitution of the State... And perform the duty... And perform the duty... ...of member... Of member... ...of the school board of Orange County, Florida... Of the school board of Orange County, Florida... So help me God... So help me God... Congratulations. Thank you, Lord. Thank you. Thank you. And we could not have done it without the help of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and Amora Evans, who's been my friend for so many years, and my treasure, and Betty, and I just want to thank everybody that you see up here. This is not even half. Buster Spinks, you know, we just love you so much. I love you all so much. My neighbors, see, we got the Jamaicans, the Haitians, okay? The African-American, the white, the gay, the straight, the able, the disabled.
Well, folks, you just witnessed what it means to lose control of a meeting. And somehow I have a feeling that's going to end up on YouTube. I think that's the best swearing in I've ever been to. Mrs. Gordon, thank you. And when we do the remarks of the newly-installed board members, I'm going to have you go last, so we go out on a high note, okay? That was rich. Poor Mrs. Robinson has to follow you, so I'd like now to have Mrs. Robinson and her family and friends, if they'd like, to please join us at the front of the room.
I'm doing fine.
After four years, I've gotten used to following Kat, because I'm District 7, I mean, District 6, right after her, District 5, so I'm used to it. It'll be much calmer, I promise.
Okay, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Why don't you hold this for me? I do solemnly swear... I do solemnly swear... ...that I will protect and defend... That I will protect and defend... ...the Constitution and government of the United States... The Constitution and government of the United States... And the State of Florida... And the State of Florida... That I am duly qualified... That I am duly qualified... ...to hold office under the Constitution of the State... To hold office under the Constitution of the State... And perform the duties... And perform the duties... ...of member... Of member... ...the school board of Orange County, Florida... The school board of Orange County, Florida... So help me God... So help me God... Congratulations. Thanks.
And last, but of course not least, I'd like to call up Ms. Christine Moore and her family to join us at the front. Please, morning.
Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear... I do solemnly swear... ...that I will protect and defend... That I will protect and defend... ...the Constitution and government of the United States... The Constitution and the government of the United States...
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And perform the duties.
And perform the duties.
Of member.
Of member.
The school board of Orange County, Florida.
Of the school board of Orange County, Florida.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the newly-installed members for any remarks they'd like to make. And Ms. Gould, if you would lead us off. Welcome to the Orange County School Board.
Oh, I've got to push a button. See, I didn't even know how to learn. I have to learn the technology. Thank you for this evening. It's been lovely so far and it's a wonderful memory. Vicki, thank you so much for your service. Any service is a gift to our community. And your words were really taken to heart in your speech. And I appreciate your support this evening as well. I want to thank my new friends that I met on the campaign trail for being here tonight to help with entertainment. I hope you enjoyed some of the drum music outside. Andy here was a part of that and Fam and Jean-Claude. It's been wonderful getting to know you as well. I have very, very many people that I would like to thank, but I won't go into all of that. Many of them are here and many are not. But this started as a grassroots movement. And as I have been telling people since election night, this is not my seat. This is our seat. And I look forward to working with every aspect of this community, as well as the wonderful members of this board, to further it, to be all that it can be, to steal some great words that we've heard in the past. But thank you for your support and for this opportunity to serve. And Andrew, thank you for being here tonight from our church. Pastor Miller is actually our youth pastor at St. Luke's and has been a wonderful leader of the youth in West Orange County. And I deeply appreciate that for his first year here. Thank you again.
Ms. Gould, I'm so glad that you recognized Andy and Jean-Claude because I had forgotten to recognize them for the wonderful music they provide us. If you could stand and let us give you a hand, a round of applause. Thank you. Next, I'm going to go to Mrs. Robinson.
So I don't have to go after Kat?
We've all learned up here to never follow Kat at a graduation, a school dedication ceremony. New Rockney has nothing on the Kat Gordon.
It's a gift. It's a gift.
It's a gift.
It is a gift.
You're right.
It is a gift, Kat. It is a gift, Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you. I'm just so thrilled to be here again tonight, getting sworn in for my second term. I want to thank a few special people that are here with me to celebrate tonight. Obviously, I had a lot of people who helped volunteer on the campaign trail over the many, many months. But a few of you special ones came tonight. Thank you so much for your time collecting petitions and walking neighborhoods and sign waving and hosting events. And to Derek coordinating the entire campaign and being there for us in the midnight crisis every time we called, saying, "Oops, what have we done this time?" So anyway, thank you, Margie, Robbie, Mary, and Bill and Barbara. Thank you all so much. And then especially, I can't forget my sweet family. I couldn't be here without your support and your love. I'm not going to get emotional, but I'm not kidding you, they helped me through this whole campaign. It was truly amazing. We walked 2,500 houses and they were there with me the whole way. And we put out more than 600 to 700 signs. They were right there with me. And large signs, small signs. We waved signs. We went to political hobnobs. And they just held me up when I was exhausted. So I thank you so much for the sacrifice that our family makes for me to be here. Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to really quickly say, it's hard to believe it's been four years. It's been a really fun four years. It's been a little really crazy four years. We've had challenges and triumphs. Obviously, the largest challenge we've had was the budget crisis that's hit everyone. The economy tanked and we found ourselves needing to make creative budget cuts. And I think we worked really well with the superintendent, Mr. Blocker, at that point to make some very creative budgets cuts that protected the classroom and protected student achievement. And because of that, we found ourselves in the number-one most efficient administratively, wait, administratively effective district in the state of Florida, which means more dollars go to the classroom. And I'm very proud of that. And thank you. And another big triumph that came from that budget crisis also is when we found out we really needed more money. We were able to go out to the community and we rallied the community in the support of the one-mill property tax increase, which is absolutely amazing, for the community to support us and say, "We trust you with our dollars." It's been phenomenal. We've got two years left of that and we're so thankful. It went directly to our operations and it's been able to help us keep hundreds of teachers in their jobs and keep student programs and student activities in place. That's been a wonderful thing. Some other challenges, obviously, that we've had over the last four years too have been increasing public education reform. You know, choice for the sake of choice coming down to us from every direction. Increased regulations on our hard-working teachers. FCAT, increasing the cut scores on us. And despite all of those challenges, we've continued to succeed academically here in OCPS. Over the last three out of the last five years, we've been an A-rated school district by the state of Florida, which is phenomenal. And then another really interesting statistic that I think a lot of people miss, of our 19 traditional high schools, we have more than a 90% graduation rate, which I think's absolutely phenomenal. I want to thank our district staff and in particular, our hard-working teachers that make that possible. Also, despite these budget cuts at the administrative level, we were able to hire, Mr. Blocker was able to hire some incredible, phenomenal cabinet-level positions. As a board, we got to hire our new attorney, which has been fabulous. I know Woody's here somewhere. That's been a really nice... There he is. I can't see him through my flowers that my family gave me. Hey, Woody. Woody has been such a wonderful... Having been two years, my first two years I was under our previous attorney and then two years now with Mr. Rodriguez. It's really been phenomenal to have Mr. Rodriguez there to work with. So I thank him. And we've had, in this last four years, we've gotten a new chief operational officer, chief facilities officer, chief of staff, deputy superintendent, many new area superintendents, to name a few. And the biggest, most exciting person that this board was able to hire, we got the most sought-after, talented new superintendent in the state of Florida, Dr. Barbara Jenkins. Thanks. Not all school board members get to hire a new superintendent. If they stay longer than your tenure, you don't get to do that. So I'm very thrilled that I got to participate in that. But even after naming all those accomplishments, the one that I'm most proud of over the last four years and most excited for, for the district, is obtaining relief from the decades-old desegregation, federal desegregation order. This unitary status designation was a long time coming and much-needed to show that the Orange County School Board cares about equality for all children in Orange County Public Schools. And I'm very proud of that designation. And last, I know the next four years are going to have challenges, they're going to have triumphs, many, I hope. And I'm so thankful to be working here again with this board. I think we all work really well together. And I look forward to working with the superintendent to continue accelerating the momentum in a positive direction for Orange County Public Schools. So thank you, everyone.
Well said, Mrs. Robinson. And I know I speak for the entire board when I say we want to thank your family and all your supporters out there for working so hard to return you to this board. You're a invaluable resource for this board. Ms. Moore.
I think I understand the strategy. We don't have to go after Mrs. Gordon. Okay. Sometimes campaigns can be very long, but they're also rewarding. And during that process, you really get to appreciate all the people in your life. And of course, I would like to first thank my children and my mother because I got to tell you, Ben and Audra have not had dinner on a Tuesday and Thursday night for four years and it looks like it might go for another four here. So thank you, guys, for putting up with your mom. And I really want to thank, my sorority sisters are here as well, Beta Sigma Phi, Diana and Carolyn. Could not have done it without them. Those ladies drove me around night after night to visit voters and campaign and I couldn't have done it without them. I also am blessed to have two pastors with me tonight, Pastor Ray Hadley and Pastor Kevin Goza, who will be delivering the benediction in a moment. And I had the very best fundraising team around. And so there's so many in this room who helped me to raise the funds needed. And I probably shouldn't tell them this, but there was just a wee little bit left over at the end. So I want to thank you all. When you see those big banners at Apopka High School, Okoye High School, and Waukega High School that say "From Christine Moore," it's really from all of you. So thank you so much for supporting my efforts to win reelection. And Nancy, you did a great job in summarizing our accomplishments. So I'm going to make it a little bit shorter and a little bit different, but we've really had a very successful four years and I love working with the board. We have had the highest district graduation rates in our history. It's over 91%. And that is just something for everyone in this room to be so proud of. We had triple-digit increases in the participation rates for our students taking AP exams and passing the AP exams. And again, Mrs. Robinson mentioned this, but we had the largest number of our high schools, 17 out of 19, named to the annual Washington Post list of high schools. And this list comprises what Washington Post believes is the top 9% of schools in the entire nation. So 17 out of our 19 schools are considered to be in the top of the country. And that's really quite an accomplishment. And again, we were strategic. We were bold. We led in 2010 when other districts didn't even think it's possible. And we've been watching what's been happening in the election last Tuesday. We were able to go to our community and say, "We know you're hurting and it's really up to you, but if you're able to continue to fund programs somewhat to the level that we've had, we would be able to preserve arts and athletics and high-quality teachers." And I just heard a statistic yesterday from our fine arts department that Orange County actually placed the highest number of any county in the state of students in all county music programs. And so just thank, without that one-mill, all the art and music teachers that we probably would have not had. So thank you to the citizens and everyone in this room for making that possible. Going in the future, I think we're going to see another wonderful four years. We already really have a little bit of a roadmap of things that we're going to have to climb and hills to climb. And one is the Common Core standards, which are coming online. That's incredibly more difficult standards, increased rigor. And we're always, already seeing our staff ramp up with professional development and getting our, I believe it's our kindergarten or first graders, they're already preparing for those new exams. We will have the challenge of resources to shift to 50% digital by 2015. And I am just astounded at what that actually is going to mean in terms of professional development and resources to get our schools and our children ready for that. And again, we will have to continue to renovate our school facilities. We're only going to make it up to 92 schools. And I've been so blessed to have so many schools in my community. This last year, I was dealing with four new facilities and we dedicated Sunridge this morning. So we have another four to six years, I believe, of trying to finish up the rest of our schools. And we also, this board has really been aggressive and encouraged in providing greater choices and customization to our own children and following the lead of many pieces of legislation coming from Tallahassee. So I believe our parents will enjoy greater choice as we move ahead. And they can be assured, from what Mrs. Robinson said, that we always try to do it as efficiently as possible, keep every dollar in the classroom. And we're so proud to be honored as the district with the lowest administrative cost in the entire state because of the commitment to be able to fund the classroom. And another initiative that Dr. Jenkins just rolled out this past year was our interest in customer service and that we really want to be a statewide leader in providing services from the downtown central office out to the schools, to the staff and the family. And we believe that this district has to earn the right to be the first choice for parents of where they're going to send their children in this county. And we believe we'll be that. And we will work very, very hard from the front office to classroom teachers, to transportation, to district team leaders, to provide the very best service to all of our families and children. And we take that very, very seriously. So I hope you'll be proud of this board. I hope you will really see the drive to be the very best. We said we were going to be, Mr. Roach, the top producer of successful students, I can't talk, successful students in the nation. And we take that seriously. We take that as a goal to accomplish and that hill and that mountain to climb. And we couldn't do it without everyone in this room. So Dr. Jenkins, to you and your staff, look forward to the next four years of working together to make Orange County Public Schools the very best. Thank you.
Well said, Ms. Moore, as always. And you know, as a parent myself of three children in our public schools, and I think I speak for everybody in this room, I think you in particular, we have 81 million reasons to thank you for your reelection because you are the prime architect of that special millage that the voters of this county passed two years ago, along with this entire board. And because of that, you have not been reading the stories and the articles in the press that you've been reading about other counties, about us being in crisis. And you deserve a tremendous amount of credit, as does the entire board, for that. So thank you.
All right, Mrs. Gordon, fire us up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too would like to just give thanks to the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, because everybody on my team know that I would not be here without the Spirit of the Lord, because you all know I have to curse every now and then. That is why I am surrounded by a host of ministers. AA, CCC has been my guiding light. Father Penda, Reverend Willie C. Barnes, Reverend Black, Reverend Gray, I can go down the line. There are over 100 ministers behind me. And I just cannot thank them enough, even when their congregation don't always understand. We're working, Dr. Jenkins and I, we're working with Bishop Kevin Cabarrus now and helping Bishop Wiggins. And we met with Dr. Larry Mills on yesterday. But I want you to know, the ministers have been a standing force. And in spite of you, my children know that their father was a minister in the AME Church for many of years. So I'm pretty much free to be me now. I do not have to be the minister-wife and sit in a chair with my legs crossed and be criticized by the congregation. I can be me. And I think that's what I have been. And my husband put up with it for many years and my children have put up with it. And I love them dearly. They have been with me from the time we started in 1995. As I stated before, Doe Frederick saw something in me. And Doe has been my director and my logistics person from day one, along with the Classroom Teachers Association, under the new leadership now. But Cliff, and I can go all the way back to every president. I served as vice president of the Classroom Teachers Association. And they saw to it that I would be their incoming president. But they saw more in me than I saw in myself. And they said, "You are going to quit your job. You're going to go work in Osceola County. You're going to come back and run for the school board of Orange County and build schools in our community. You're going to fight to get rid of the unitary, to bring unitary status." And the only person I knew that had any history about unitary status was Ralph Armstead. And Ralph happened to have been a member of my church that really knew the history of what happened. There are many teachers in this audience that were in what we call the crossover, that some of you will never, ever relate to. And then Attorney Harriet Burke happened to be in my church. And then Attorney Harriet Burke happened to be in my church, and even a colleague, and she said, "We can work together, we can do this, we can present this to the board and have the board to take a look at it." For years, this school board sat under segregated schools, segregated facilities, segregated programs. But then this same board that I sat on with Mr. Roach began to see a way that we must get out of it. This same board also, my community, sitting in the audience today, sent me back to this board when they told me we had 11 F schools in our community, and they would no longer tolerate 11 F schools. I went to Superintendent Blocker at that time and asked what we could do. He said, "The best thing that I could do is give you some of the best area superintendents," and that he did. He gave me Dr. James Lawson and Dr. Kathy Polk and so many, Dr. Riley and so many other great area superintendents to go into difficult, struggling, challenging schools so that we could move those grades from F to As. And within a year, those schools were moved from 11 F to 11 As. I want to thank those principals, black and white, Hispanic, that saw it necessary to go into challenged, struggling schools and to bring them up to par. We're on track now. And then that community that you see standing with me tonight, Betty Chandler and a whole group of them, the Eatonville community, they told me, the Pine Hills community, they told me, the St. John Vienni, they still felt that Saddle was not up to par. We needed another school in the Millennium area, we needed to build an Eagle's Nest, we needed to rebuild Jones High School and reclaim the land that had been held hostage for 25 years.[725.43][725.43](APPLAUSE). And working through Woody Rodriguez and our team, and Eileen and John Pomerani, we were able to go back and claim the land for Jones High School, and now they are free to have their concession and raise money for their schools and keep 100 percent of the profit.[748.01][748.01](APPLAUSE). We had a lot of work to do, and then the superintendent came to us in a very crisis time, and he asked every board member on this board to give up one school. That was not an easy task to do, but my community said, "Do it, and we'll stand behind you. Do it, and we'll stand behind you." We met night and day, and then the community on the east side started following us, and they liked what they saw we were putting together, to say, "Look at the enrollment in our school, and if it's not where it's going to be, we're not going to get full service. Take the giant step, Cat Gordon, we will back you, we will be behind you, and go forward, and combine our schools and build us a state-of-the-art school." And right now, I stand before you and was re-elected on that with the people you see in the audience, that we will build a new Richmond Heights-Ecclestone combined school within that community, state-of-the-art.[813.51][813.51](APPLAUSE). Evans High School stood torn up for years. I called on the general counsel, Frank Kuppenbacher and Mr. Blocker, to take a look at it. We called on Maurice Snead, the national attorney, and asked her to go in and let's ride the district and look at the beautiful schools they had on the east and the west, the north and the south. And then we rode up to Evans and Jones and Oak Ridge, and we felt saddened. Even the national attorney said, "This cannot stand." My community said, "Cat Gordon, we will stand behind you if you will build us and get it going to help us get a new Evans." Well, we got a new plan, but it wasn't a new Evans. I have the plans that I will always keep in my office and pass it on to the next predecessor to let you see what, not this board, but previous board wanted to patch up Jones, patch up Evans, patch up Oak Ridge, but my neighborhood said, "No way." They stood with me. Today, we have a new Evans High School because of this board. We have a new Jones High School because of this board. We have a new Oak Ridge High School because of this board. I can go on and on, on and on, on and on.[902.23][902.23](LAUGHTER). But my greatest claim to fame was working with the National School Board, and they're honoring me and asking me to serve on many committees, and watching my colleagues go back and forth. We were missing a link. We had no evaluative instrument to really hold our superintendent at task, and now that instrument has gone and exploded worldwide. And now the superintendent today, Dr. Barbara Jenkins, have turned that instrument over to Dr. Kathy Palmer and her great staff, and we brought back to this board an instrument to evaluate our general counsel, because this board did not and was not afraid to do that, and to evaluate our superintendent, and this board was not afraid to do that. I thank you for the opportunity to serve. I thank those that have stayed with me throughout the years and have never wavered. I am union. I will always be union. And I say that because union, that's my professional organization. If you're a lawyer, you have yours.[989.23][989.23](LAUGHTER). If you're a doctor, you have yours. If you're the top judge in the Ninth Judicial Court, you have yours.[1000.12][1000.12](LAUGHTER). And I want you to know, I stand tall for CTA and OCEA in Osceola County. I stand tall for FPA. I stand tall for AFT, and I stand tall for NEA. I am union because I am a teacher. Thank you.[1024.25][1024.25](APPLAUSE).
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. That was, as always, excellent. I can assure you that when I'm in Judge Perry's court, he answers to nobody.[1034.98][1034.98](LAUGHTER). I've been there. All right, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to congratulate our newly-installed board members, Mrs. Gordon, Ms. Moore, Mrs. Robinson, and Ms. Gould, welcome to the board. Ms. Gould, I look forward to, I'd look forward to working with you and continuing to work with all my other fellow board members. Again, Ms. Bell, I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. I'm looking forward to this board going upward and onward. I liked, Ms. Gould, what you said, "We're going to be all we can be." I think that's our motto on this board, and I think that's a good fit with you being on it. So, I thank you, and you know, we're ready to, we're ready to rock and roll.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Ms. Cadel.
I too want to welcome everyone and congratulate everyone. We've had a hard four years. We have had to deal with things that none of us ever imagined. We have seen our homeless students' population rise. We have had our professionals who have lost their homes or had their power turned off. We have never had to have as many food kitchens as we have throughout this district, and I know that we're starting to turn the tide. I know it's going to be a hard four years, but it will be a good four years. And to all of my fellow board members, thank you so much for all you've done to support me this year, because you know, I've been going every which way. So, I appreciate the support that you've given me as I take on the leadership role with FSBA. We can't do it without a team. And to all the staff, I know that we're going to have a great another four years. And to Superintendent Jenkins, you continue to amaze me. You were wonderful on TV tonight. Thank you for going and explaining why all the metal was disappearing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Mr. Roach.
Just a point of personal privilege, you just have to do this whenever you're a, when you're a beginning teacher in a county, and you have, look out in the audience, and you'll see two students that were my very first students. I want them to stand, Diana Moore and Catherine Tompkins. Would you please stand up, both of you? These are my students, everybody, please. Catherine, stand up.[1176.83][1176.83](APPLAUSE). I just have to tell you, I'm so proud when I see these students grow up and take leadership roles in the community. It's wonderful. But fellow board members, I'm very, very delighted about the next year coming, and I want to tell you that all of these board members had a tough road to hoe this year. The only time I can remember when every board member had some really serious competition in the election, and each of you had a couple of people in there, and those of us sitting in these seats and those of us who are elected official know how tough that is when you've got people out there working very, very hard to win that seat. So, I want to congratulate all of you. I was there to watch you go through it, and I think you have a lot to be proud of. So, let's have a great year.[1224.83][1224.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Roach. All right, members of the audience, at this time, we do have some very brief business that we need to take care of, and then we're going to hear from Pastor Goza and the benediction. The first order of business, members of the board, is that we need to nominate and elect a vice chair. So, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to nominations for vice chair. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. It's been my privilege and honor to have served as the vice chair for the past three years, and it's been an experience that I've enjoyed. It helps, this has helped me grow in leadership, it's helped me to feel like, to feel what it would be like to be the chair. But I want to say, I'd like to...
You don't want it.[1279.14][1279.14](LAUGHTER).
Sort of like being a grandparent, you know, you can just sort of give them back when they need to.
It's more like being a husband.
Now, what's that supposed to mean?
Nothing.
Anyway, I want to thank, I want to thank my fellow board members for having that trust in me and having that confidence and letting me serve that. It's been quite an experience. But it is time for me to step aside and let another board member have that experience. I think it grows depth in the, on our board for, for us to have as much experience in leadership as possible. So, I'd like to say that I willingly step back and leave it open for other, another board member to carry on that position.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. And I just want to say, as a chair, and we like to joke around up here a little bit, but you've just been a phenomenal asset. In my first two years, I could think of nobody better to have at my side and to really provide me with counsel and advice and always a calm, steady hand and always, always sort of letting me know how to steer the right course. So, thank you for all your help. All right, Mr. Roach.
Daryl, I want to tell you, you've served very well, and I just love calling you Madam Vice Chair. I just have always thought you fit that beautifully, and I wish you could be chair someday, and who knows, you may be that. I think anyone on the board, it would be nice to rotate it, because I think it's a really nice, it's a nice honor, and sometimes you actually get to lead a meeting. But the, I've been very impressed on this board, of course, all of you, but there's one member who really opens my eyes, I think, to a lot of political kinds of things, and she seems to be a very, very good, a wealth of knowledge of how things work. So, I just want to know if maybe Mrs. Moore would like to accept that nomination to vice chair.
Okay, it's been moved. Ms. Moore, are there any other nominations from the board?
Mr. Chair, I would second that nomination.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Seeing that, without any other nominations, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Ms. Moore serving as vice chair for the next year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? One year, forgive me, one year.[1425.14][1425.14](LAUGHTER).
Wait a minute, we have to do this every year?
No, it's two years, isn't it?
No.
We have to do it every year? No, no, no. One year.
Okay, she's my only vice chair. I didn't know that. Learned something new.
She does it every twice.
Oh, okay. All right, all opposed, like signs. Ms. Moore, congratulations.[1447.14][1447.14](APPLAUSE). All right, board members, you see in your board packet there under Board Docs, the proposed board dates and times for the 2012-13 school board meetings, and any modifications to that calendar. So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion...
Move the adoption of the calendar.
It's been moved by Ms. Cadel, it's been seconded by Ms. Flynn. I have a couple buttons pushed, I don't know if they're from before. Okay. Mrs. Gordon, did you want to say something, or was that from before?
That was from before.
Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion on the establishment of the board dates, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the calendar adopted. Now, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for Florida School Boards Association Legislative Representative and Alternate. So, why don't we start with Legislative Representative first. Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Ms. Nancy Robinson for that position, please.
I'm the Board of Directors, representative for FSBA.
But you could do both, I've done it.
How much longer?
Baby, I've done it.
I get it. How much longer?
No, 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 you can't get out of this.[1525.14][1525.14](LAUGHTER). No. Everybody must feel the road to Tallahassee.
I know, I love Tampa. I love Tampa, I love...
You can do it.
I can tell you, as president of FSBA, you don't have to go any more than you're going for the Board of Directors.
I accept.
Thank you.
I accept.
I can tell you, as a person who have served in that capacity, following Rick Roach and the rest, you can handle it. Thank you.
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Vice Chair Flynn. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Nancy Robinson as our FSBA Legislative Representative, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted unanimously. Okay, we're now on an alternate. Can I have a nomination for the alternate?
Uh-uh. I've done it.[1574.22][1574.22](LAUGHTER). Nancy's looking over here, you all know what my story is.
Can I nominate Pam, even though Pam can't vote tonight?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to nominate Pam Gould as the alternate for legislative liaison. I won't miss, because I have to be there for Board of Directors anyway, so you're pretty safe. Promise. Promise.
Actually, to keep Tallahassee happy, we have to put a name in there.
Right.
So, we'll take, if you do have to go for some reason, don't worry, I'll be there too.
All right, it's been nominated, Ms. Gould, for alternate to the FSBA Legislative Committee. It's been seconded by Mr. Roach. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of the nomination of Pam Gould, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that adopted unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Gould. All right.[1622.22][1622.22](APPLAUSE).
It's a long way.
All right. Ms. Cadel, I always turn to you for these things. I think that's it for FSBA nominations. Is that it? I don't have anything. Want to make sure I don't forget some?
We will look so good in Tallahassee, because we'll have ours in really, really quick, so we're good.
Yeah, we beat everybody else by a week. All right, well, this has been a wonderful, wonderful evening, and I know I speak for the entire board, and I want to say thank you for coming out this evening and supporting your friends, your loved ones, those that you truly felt were the best for the people of Orange County, and most importantly, the children of Orange County. I'd like to now invite up to the lectern Pastor Kevin Goza of Trinity Baptist Church to please lead us in the benediction. Pastor Goza, welcome.
Thank you. Our heavenly Father, it has truly been a joy to be a part of this meeting tonight that represents the very best of democracy in the United States of America. Father, I am so thankful that men and women such as these on this board are willing to serve in such an important capacity of leading our county to be the very best that it can be in educating our children and meeting the needs of our families as they attempt to raise children that can grow and be productive citizens and good citizens, and one day have careers that are meaningful and have their own families. Father, it's a huge task, and I know that each person sitting here tonight sacrificed so many things, not the least of which is time, opportunities with friends, other events that they would like to be a part of, oftentimes, just to be in their place of service in this elected capacity. Father, I pray for them. I ask your blessings on each one of them, on our superintendent, on the staff, on all of our teachers, faculty members, support personnel all across this county. God, I pray that you would meet their needs, give them wisdom as they face the challenges that lie before them, and in an economy that is still very difficult and challenging, many decisions have to be made related to that. And I know that's a burden oftentimes that, for them, perhaps seems too great to bear. But Father, I know with courage and tenacity, perseverance, they can navigate through these difficult times, and we can have the kind of educational system in this county that we can all appreciate and support. Father, I pray your blessings from this night forward upon them, and again, God, I pray your wisdom and your protection, not only on these board members, but on our children that travel several days a week to these schools to receive the very best that we have to offer them with regard... difficult times, and we can have the kind of educational system in this county that we can all appreciate and support. Father, I pray your blessings from this night forward upon them, and again, God, I pray your wisdom and your protection, not only on these board members, but on our children that travel several days a week to these schools to receive the very best that we have to offer them with regard to education. Thank you, God, for loving us and giving us a wonderful country where democracy works. It's not always pretty, it's not always the way we want it, but it works, and we're thankful for that, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Goza. And with that, members, if you're here for our regular board meeting, what we're going to do now is to, or excuse me, members of the audience, I meant to say, is adjourn this organizational meeting and reconvene in 15 minutes for our regular board meeting. With that, we are adjourned.